All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hamilton County Commission, February 6, 2025. Please, at the dais, let's introduce ourselves.
Kristi Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aluto County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
County Commissioner Denise Drehouse. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of your parliament for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas. Yes. Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any public comments? Okay, no public comments. All right, we'll move to comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Thank you, just a few things. I continue to be involved with the Professional Development Academy, the AI Leadership Academy, and it's, I'm sure I'm going to bring a lot to the board as far as where I think we need to be and also to administration. So, because it's here to stay and we can't ignore it. And I'm just having a great time. This is our second week. Looking forward to the next three weeks. And then I had an update with the port as it relates to new projects, ongoing projects, and some of the vision that I have as it relates to vacant property and what we might be able to do with it. Of course, I talked about tiny homes again and where we might place those. And then I attended the One Ohio Region Two Governance Board meeting, and I'm sure Madam Chair will talk more about that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you very much. I also attended the One Ohio Region Two meeting and look forward to our Chair's comments. And really want to, I think they've got, the state's finally got some things in order, but there's certainly some additional questions that continue to be out there. And I just want to say that on the local level, I think we've done a great job in terms of getting funding to the ground to fight against this opioid epidemic. Want to also have people put on their calendars. The 513 Relief Bus 2025 will be 10:00 AM, I believe, February 27th at Woodlawn Recreation Center. Very proud of the, I believe that's the date. Yes, okay. February 27th, so people get, because we get a lot of calls, when is it going back out? So, wanted to let people know about that. And it's been doing good so far. We had 30,000. I'm looking forward to the new numbers. We've helped 30,000 people already with the new mobile services that we provide throughout Hamilton County. Also wanted to, in addition to that, wanted to, we certainly, as the county, we released a statement. We've gotten a lot of calls. Our office is getting a lot of calls regarding the governor's budget. And certainly, we don't know everything in the budget. I've been on the Finance Committee and I know Commissioner Drehouse as well, and those budgets are pretty extensive, thousands of pages. Got to get into the fine print, and I know that a lot of the state reps, that'll be in state senators, we're going through it. But there is a proposal or a line item, I guess if you will, that the governor is proposing in terms of raising the casino, I mean, the sports betting tax. And let me just say that one of the things I think our team at the county had looked at that as a possible funding store. So, we know that we're going to need a big investment from the state of Ohio, a big investment from the NFL, as well as a big private investment in order to try to get out of the upside-down financial formula that we have been put in for the last 20-plus years. So, obviously, it's early and how it works up there. It's a lot of, the governor presents his budget and then the legislature gets to go in and out and carving and those kind of things. I will say that in that proposal, from what I read, the governor's proposal, the tax would go into a fund and then there would be appointed a board, and then we would have to go to that board and try to get approved for funding that we would possibly need. So, you know, that, it would be a lot of steps. And so, I'm anxious to see how that particular, those steps would work because we are on a tight timeline and we need to have a new funding model that relieves the local, everyday taxpayer. So, I think of the sports component may be the right thing. Let sports be able to fund itself. But again, it's very to the budget because they'll be carving in and carving out and lots of negotiations and give and take. But I do want to say we had a meeting with the governor and about making sure that Hamilton County, we're not left behind. And he had indicated he was happy to hear from us. And I think, you know, he heard. Based on what he has presented, it shows that at least he listened and heard the important needs. So, we'll see how that goes. My last thing, I will just say that there is never a dull moment, but I don't want to take it necessarily lightly. There is a tone that has started from the top down at the federal level that is working its way down to the local level. It's not just executive orders and policies, but it's creating a tone. And I was very upset today. We have to park in front of the building, just like City Hall parks in front of it. I was at City Hall, we had parking. When I was at the state legislature, we had parking. And the county commissioners, there's only three of us, and there's parking in front for us. And we have some cones there to identify as well as some signage. And this morning, myself and Commissioner Dumas were pulling in to park in our assigned parking spaces in front of the building. And I got out because the cones were there to move the cones so that we could park where we're supposed to park. And a gentleman rushed over across the street from a parking area and he snatched the cone out of my hand. And he said, "You can't touch this cone and you can't park here." Well, I said, "Well, maybe he didn't know who I was," so I identified myself. I said, "Wait a minute, I'm a county commissioner, pointing to the sign, this is where we park." He said, "He don't give a who I am. I can't touch these cones. These are cones for him and the workers." Well, luckily, I saw Commissioner Dumas got out of her car to say, "What in the world's going on?" And the sheriff came out. When the sheriff came out, he explained to them and he still seems as though he didn't care. Now, this is not the type of workers or contractors or attitudes that we're trying to bring here, down here to Hamilton County. To snatch out of any, I don't care who the person was, but to snatch something out of someone's hands is already bad enough. But then they identified that they are an elected official and they said they don't care. It's the attitude we don't want down here in Hamilton County. So, I want to thank the Administrator, she's going to look into it. But I want to send a message to everybody, from purchasing to procurement to directors. We are not going to have that type of attitude, the 234-year system that we had long ago. And I want the gentleman identified. I want to know what company he's with, and we can't have that type. I don't want those kind of people working on our projects. And I just thought the audacity, but I can't say the audacity because that is the tone that we have unleashed in our country. And I'm saying I don't want that tone unleashed in our county. So, Mr. Aluto, I hope we find out and we can say, "Oh, it was just..." And I know, you don't just snatch something out of someone's hand. Let me snatch something out of, out of the CEO Procter &amp; Gamble's hand and he parking at his space and see what happens. Let someone else that's walking up and down the street, that we have people, the homeless, and they snatch something out of somebody's hand. We don't have that type of attitude here. So, I want us to put our foot down. It's not going to be brought here. We're one Hamilton County and we're not going to have it. And I don't want any contractors, don't bring, I think he was from Indiana. That's even worse. Come running down here getting our tax dollars, got a job that he's going to get on our tax dollars, and they're going to tell an elected county commission, county commissioners, that we can't park there. He's in charge and he's been elected to nothing and not, may not even be a resident of our county. So, one, I'm concerned that he's from Indiana and he's taking a job that I would love to see somebody from Hamilton County have. And then two, the fact that he had the audacity, the courage, the arrogance to come over to our state, our county, read the sign and say he don't care nothing about it. We putting a stop to it today, not just him, but what he represents. So, I wanted to bring that up and I want to thank, I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to say something, but we brought it to your attention and we're, we're going to look into it. Not just look into it, but remedy it.
Yeah, only that we just heard about it this morning. Your Chief of Staff reported it right after it happened, Commissioner. We're looking into it right now. Don't have any further details on it, but once I, once I get them, we will take appropriate action on it.
Thank you very much. I didn't know Commissioner Dumas, I didn't want to take you off.
I'm a witness. If you need a witness, I am. I was, couldn't believe it, yeah.
Constant challenge with the parking out there. Thank you for bringing it to the attention of the administration. I have a couple of things. The first thing is the by leave one that is related to the administrator's salary. We had some conversation about bringing his salary in, up to date really, between last year and this year with commensurate to the work he's doing on behalf of the commission, on behalf of the county. I will say that I think Jeff is doing a fantastic job with many, many, many items on his plate and juggling those items, giving them all due priority and attention. And it's really quite the remarkable feat, Jeff. And so, thank you for what you do on behalf of the county citizens and on behalf of this commission representing the work here. And I do want to also recognize that we're not the only ones that recognize the good work of Jeff Aluto, but the Ohio City County Management Association awarded Jeff the Career Achievement Award recently. And so, I don't want it to go without note that you are being recognized outside of Hamilton County for the good work you're doing and your leader. It's really a matter of leadership and you are to be commended for your leadership to this county. So, Commissioners, I am going to advance by leave number one, but give you an opportunity to talk about that by leave if you so choose.
Well, I'd just like to make a statement that I'm very satisfied with our administrators relates to meeting the needs of myself as a commissioner and also the community. And just outstanding the amount of issues and projects that you have on your plate and able to utilize your staff in such a competent way. So, I'm very satisfied with your performance as of now.
Thank you, subject to change. Commissioner Reese.
First of all, congratulations on the award as well, deserved. We've been able to do some phenomenal things that you've been able to implement through a global pandemic and a changing economy and sustaining, having us have a sustainable budget that is balanced and structurally balanced in a time like this. So, congratulations again and happy to support this by leave that continues the work. We've got some challenging times ahead and some big negotiations. And so, looking forward to it. So, I support the resolution.
Well, and I, let me go ahead and make the motion. So, I will make a motion to approve of by leave number one.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you again, Jeff.
Just very briefly, just want to thank the Board for your confidence and also just to say that with clear policy direction and a fantastic staff and employees, my job can be much easier than it looks sometimes. So, I want to thank the Board for its direction and thank the leadership team of the county and all the county employees who do all the great work of, that the Board asked for on behalf of the community. And they make this a fantastic place to work and a great job to have. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Jeff. I too was going to comment on the governor's budget. And Commissioner Reese, you already mentioned that we have some forward movement on the state being able to participate in that financial stack related to the stadiums. I think that's definitely a good step forward. We, of course, have to have it survive the legislature. And so, I think there will be some work to do to make sure that it remains, the funding sources, the gambling revenue, and I think that's most appropriate. But I do think we are going to have to advocate on behalf of ourselves and others will also throughout the state to the legislature to make sure we continue to have forward progress on that item. The One Ohio meeting, we're, it was good to have everybody there. We had a nice collection of individuals that we've appointed to that group. We heard from Alicia Nelson, who is heading up the foundation at the state level. She came down with some updates. Region Two is doing very well, by, by the way, related to our projects. All but one of our projects have advanced and the contracts have gone out. So, that's the good news because it means the money is hitting the ground and hitting this community in a way where we are going to be saving lives and getting people into treatment and long-term recovery related to addiction. So, I was glad that she came down. She did say at that meeting, we were going to have a conversation in March about the distribution formulas, so more to come after that meeting takes place. Couple others, couple others things. One is that I want to announce that I have a new intern, Victoria Strawbridge, who is here in the audience. Welcome to the county, Victoria. She's here for a semester and we want to welcome you to the county organization. And then lastly, I want to make an announcement related to the state of the county. We have set a date of February 26th for the state of the county over at Memorial Hall. Doors will open at 5:00 and the speech will start at 6:00. And it should go about 35 minutes, at least that's the goal. I know, right? So, we'll see how we do. But that's all I have. Commissioner, did you have something else?
I just wanted to make a comment about the two-year budget, as you both have mentioned. I wrote a note to the governor about House Bill 315 and that we, I was wanting him to veto that bill which allowed basically the bingo organization to do whatever they wanted to do without our permission. the bingo organization to do whatever they wanted to do without our permission. Well, he did not veto that and so I was not happy about it. But last night I wrote him a note about, I'm extremely happy about the brilliant idea as it relates to, and a lot of gamblers, gamblers may not think it's such a, a brilliant idea of changing the 20% to 40% as it relates to taxes. So I thought he was due another email, just saying that I thought it was a, a great idea and that, uh, I knew he would do the right thing, which I said about 315, about House Bill 315. And I let him know, uh, this is the right thing to do. And also as it relates to the budget that he's submitting, it's about 600 pages. And I tried to do my new AI skill that I'm learning and I tried to have AI pull out the part, um, about the revenue and it didn't work. Uh, so they said, be careful about AI. It's good when it works, but you have to make sure the information is accurate. But one thing I did read in there is that, um, the governor calls the people, as, um, Commissioner Reese was mentioning, the board, their commissioners. And maybe he was talking about us that we would decide. You don't think so?
I don't think so.
I thought it was ironic he called them commissioners.
It was ironic.
Yeah. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, to, to, from your lips to God's ears, Commissioner, but I don't think so. Uh, but anyway, we'll, so we'll see how, maybe, maybe that's what we could advocate for.
Yes.
Um, with the legislature, yeah.
Can I, uh, also one thing I was going to ask about is that I know that, um, as a board, we have all been, um, pushing and advocating for, uh, helping with senior citizens on two things. One is, uh, property tax freezing. But the other was, uh, the, us being able to have the ability, counties having the ability to have a little more flexibility on, um, MSD rates with senior citizens. And, uh, I think there's a, I think COFA, they're working on, there's another bill being introduced. And I was just wondering, um, if possibly, um, I know they met with your office and they've contacted mine. I'm probably contacted Commissioner Dumas as well. Uh, if we could have some resolutions, maybe this one and, uh, maybe on the property tax freeze that we could possibly put forward as they're going into the budget negotiations and the legislature. Um, so just wanted to put that out there to see if maybe, um, if we, if we all three agreed, maybe having the administration to make sure it's accurate, but have maybe a couple, one or two resolutions supporting the seniors in those two areas. And that way it can be in the record when they, uh, start dealing with the budget.
So the, there are two things there. The one is that we do have relief for seniors that we were allowed to pass by way of the O R C. But the, what COFA is advocating for goes beyond what we were able to do. And, um, they have offered through Catherine Ingram, Senator Ingram, they've offered this bill a number of times. They have not gotten any traction. Um, but you are right, uh, the more, you know, advocacy we have related to that, the better. So, um, we have done that in the past. So let, let me, um, dig that up and see if we can find a resolution of support and offer it during, um, you know, proponent testimony if we get that far in the legislature. And since you raise it, um, and related to advocating to the legislature, there is another bill. Um, Township Trustee Kabiki reached out, he's from Columbia Township. And there is a bill, uh, related to local government funding, uh, and the, taking away some of the local government funding from townships. And he reached out yesterday and I told him that's another thing that perhaps should be on our radar. So let's, Jeff, could you put, um, there, so we've got three things now, um, that have brought to, been brought up. So maybe let's get a list and I know Anson's probably tracking this as well. And some of the things that are happening in the legislature that impact not only the county, but also the county, right? The 49 jurisdictions and see if we do want to be more aggressive in our advocacy work. I, I appreciate that. Um, I think in, and maybe it's testimony, maybe it's, um, reaching out to our lobbyists, maybe it's talking to our delegation during our meeting that's coming up. Uh, when is that meeting, Jeff?
The 24th, yes.
Of February.
Of February.
So that's coming up quick. So, okay, well, let's make sure we're capturing all this. Yes, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify one quick thing, uh, cause you and I have been in the legislature. Getting a bill, especially when you're the minority, and even when you're majority, sometimes it's tough. The only thing that has a deadline is the budget. And what I was advocating, I know we got a lot of different bills, but if there, I think I'd like to have a resolution where the county, and we still can testify and do those kind of things. But in a, in advance of the negotiation, you got to get as much as you can during the budget time. Um, and I was, I feel that these things should be rolled in the budget. And wanted to see if we can have some resolution on record. Cause when I know when I was up there, they would send me, this has been on record by this county and this is on record. Something on record now that we're on record because I know we had been, you know, they do have a program with MSD, but we wanted to go further to give us some flexibility so we can make decisions at the county level. And we haven't been able to get that, uh, I know Bill Sykes tried to put it through.
And we tried to get that in.
Yeah, we never, so my point is, can we do a resolution that we would support? Uh, you know, these two or three items and send it now while they're in negotiation. I'd like to see these bills rolled in first and foremost in the budget. Because the budget is the only thing that has a deadline. Now, once we get past the budget and you didn't make it and it's over, then that's when the bills, we'd have to go that direction. So I just, I know that all of us have been, uh, frustrated in some ways because we, our hands have been completely tied on some things we want to do. And I, I did, uh, send to the governor and I'm, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm happy about the sports betting, but I'm not happy about the freezing of the property taxes. I'm not happy of that we didn't do it, that we didn't help the seniors. So if now it goes to the legislature's hands, we could say that we're on record and our county is asking for help in that. So we can be a part of possibly the budget negotiation part of it. That, that's what I was asking about in terms of timing.
Right, I, yeah, of course. Did you have something else?
I did have something as it relates to that. You brought up about Kabiki and, uh, the possible dissolving of local government funds. I think the bigger issue, and I don't know where we are with that, the legislation that went through the possibility of, uh, dissolving some of the villages and townships was introduced. And I think that would be even be a big, they won't need the funds if they're not there actually. It said there would be an audit every 10 years and they're looking at what villages and townships should be dissolved. We talked about it, that a couple of weeks ago. And I don't know where, uh, Jeff, if you know, or Anson knows where that legislation is right now because that was presented, um, earlier this year.
Yeah, commissioners, I don't have a status on that. Anson, do you have a status on that particular bill? Yeah, we'll check on it and get back to the board.
Okay.
And I, commissioners, I, uh, do have Government Strategies Group putting together for the board a calendar related to the state budget process in terms of, um, uh, when different amendments need to be in, in the House process and then as it moves to the Senate. So, um, we'll use that to help time some of the things you're talking about in terms of the need to get, um, uh, direction and, um, our thoughts to our delegation and the, and the general assembly in total.
Right, and in the, um, the township, um, Trustee Kabiki's issue was related to the marijuana, um, money. And, and I think what, what he described was a dispensary would go into a community, the community would, there would be a benefit to the community, uh, for that dispensary being there. And so there was an incentive and now the legislature is looking to pull that back. And so that's what he, and, and so, and the, the revenue was going to the, the townships. And now they're not going to see that revenue. The incentive went away and it's, doesn't seem quite right. So, um, let, well, well, maybe, um, yeah, we, we need to find a mechanism to keep everybody up to date on all these things. So we'll, we'll figure that out. Um, but yeah, okay, great. All right, um, let's move into the regular agenda. MSD is in the room. They've got items one and two. Hello, Laura.
Good morning. Lauren DiGrisio with MSD. I have with me today Principal Engineer Matt Spadari, as well as Director Diana Christie. Uh, two items on the agenda this morning. Item number one is legislation to authorize the construction of the Kenwood Hills local sewer, which will serve 160 properties in the city of Madeira that are currently served by household sewage treatment sys- systems, which as we've heard from Hamilton County Public Health, uh, the majority of which are not sufficiently treating the wastewater, uh, do not meet current, current standards and are discharging to storm sewers in nearby streams resulting in water quality issues. Uh, this project came to MSD in 2015 as a petition requesting construction of the sewer, supported by a majority of the residents and the board authorized design of this project in 2016. Uh, this began as an assessment project under which nearly all the residents would have been assessed, no more than $12,000 each for the project. But, um, as you know, when we were going through the public hearing process, we became aware that we have a funding opportunity, a no interest loan with $4 million in principal forgiveness from Ohio EPA, uh, through their Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. Uh, we will have to proceed to construction in 2025 to receive those funds. Uh, we've proposed to use this grant to offset the amount that would have been assessed to the residents. Uh, so that's approximately $2 million while the other half, $2 million would be used to offset the MSD funded portion of the project, uh, since these funds can only be used on the public improvement. Uh, so this will provide a savings of about $12,000 for the majority of residents and, and really potentially more if they were thinking of paying through their property taxes. That amount ends up being about $18,000 in recent years. Um, this legislation before you today amends prior board resolutions to reflect this change in funding approach and states that no properties will be assessed for the cost of this project. It also authorizes, that's also, excuse me, authorizes proceeding with the construction of the project and appropriating the remaining three easements needed from the railroad for this project. Uh, provides an appropriation for the project in the amount of $12,370,146. Uh, due to the time constraints, as I mentioned with the grant funding, we did re-review the construction estimate and increased it by $976,000 uh, to account for updated jack and bore costs, conduit and railroad flagging fees. Um, because we can't award a bid that's more than 20% over the estimate, we thought it, um, would be best to proceed with, uh, a up-to-date estimate, um, so that we're not, we're minimizing the risk of getting unawardable bids and jeopardizing the grant, so. And we also have item two on the agenda this morning, which is somewhat related. Uh, this is the annual authorization for applications to and agreements with Ohio EPA and Ohio Water Development Authority for financial assistance for five MSD capital projects anticipated to proceed to construction in 2025. This is provided through, uh, Ohio's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund or W P C L F. Uh, this legislation also serves to accept and appropriate the funding provided. As mentioned, we received the no interest loan with $4 million, uh, dollars principal forgiveness for Kenwood Hills. And the remaining projects are eligible for standard, uh, low interest loans. So we can take any questions at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of comments. Well, the first comment about item number one, um, I, I thank you for reminding us that this was a citizen-led petition in the very beginning that we, um, are responding to. And the majority of citizens wanted to resure this area, um, due to a number of environmental issues that are happening when people discharge straight into the creeks out in this, this neighborhood. Um, we did have a couple of public hearings related to this issue out in the neighborhood. Uh, and MSD aggressively pursued some financing to lower the cost significantly for those homeowners. And so I do want to once again thank MSD for doing that work. Um, that was something that i- is unique and very beneficial to the folks that live in this community. So thank you for bringing those dollars to bear and lowering the cost for the residents. Um, so that's all, and then, so thank you for outlining that one. Um, on item number two, you talked about how this money i- that related to Kenwood Hills is part of this. Could you tell us how much, uh, beyond that four million? Do you know how much we will be receiving from O E P A? Is, am I reading this correctly that these are funds from O E P A coming to MSD? Um, and we know the four million is related to the Kenwood Hills project. You mentioned other projects. Do you have any idea what the dollar amount would be or have they yet to be awarded?
Um, so we will go ahead and, and advertise, um, the construction contract. And once that is awarded and we have an actual number, that's when the loan is awarded. So we don't have the exact amount yet. Um, but it's, would be comparable likely to the C I P for this year, which is a bit over, um, 500 million. So it will be significant this year. We're utilizing it. We anticipate utilizing it a lot this year.
Okay, great, we'll look forward to that. All right, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you, thank you for presentation. Um, I think as a board, we've done all we can do as it relates to having the hearings and allowing the residents to, to speak to their issues and also give you, uh, guys the questions that need to be answered. And I think you did that in an appropriate way. I certainly want, don't want to miss the deadline. I thank you for the grant, uh, the $4 million grant, um, so we can move forward. And I also thank Holly, she sent some information last night legally about how, what all we can do as a board to help the residents, um, so, uh, and they will get a timeline, um, maybe a couple of years to try to pay for what they need to pay. And I know it will be difficult, I recognize that. Um, but we're trying to do all we can do to make it a little easier with that timeframe. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you very much. And, um, I want to thank all the, all of the residents that came out to the town halls or public hearings that we had. I want to thank MSD for going back and trying to find something creatively, uh, to try to, uh, at least mitigate the cost on the public side that the private people would have to pay. Um, I still have great concerns, um, from, uh, testimonies and maybe, you know, my heart always goes out to the people on fixed incomes and that, it seems to be, um, larger amount of people on fixed incomes these days. Uh, it used to be fixed incomes, but had a certain, um, a certain kind of connotation on it. But if you're retired and you're living in this economy, uh, you can be on a fixed income. Uh, and so I was concerned about, uh, the folks that did testify and said, hey, we put a plan together, um, a retirement plan and this was not in it. Uh, I still have some concerns that on the private side, it was testified to that it can go anywhere between 20 to $60,000 and that is in $20,25 value. Uh, and this project, I understand, could go up to 2029 possibly. Uh, so that means those costs could be even higher. Um, I do have concerns because I don't, I want people to be able to afford to live in Hamilton County. Um, however, um, without this grant, it would be 60,000 plus another 12,000. Um, and so we're at least able to try to get something off that part. My question on the, on the grant part of it, cause, um, uh, Mr. Anson Twirley told us, told me that there's a difference between you won a bid and then for a grant. Then the next step is you got a letter that you won. Uh, but the only major step is that you got the thing that said award. And for me, the major step is money has been deposited. My, I want you to talk about how firm this is and say if, cause we've got a very erratic, uh, nicest way I can put it, but we've got an erratic, uh, type of behavior that's happening on the federal grant level. And you go to bid one day and they say, we're going one way. And you wake up the next day, they say they're going another way. And then, then they come back and say, no, we going this way. Is this firm? And if it's not firm, the vote that we're taking today, will you have to come back to us? Cause I would hate for us to say, yes, let's move forward. And then out of, out of your control, you know, they come back and say, no, we not doing that grant. We're putting a freeze on it, we're putting a hold on it. And now what we, the reason I would vote for it is because of the grant. I would not vote for it bec- without the grant because the grant takes $12,000 off the bottom line. So now we're stuck with it and we don't have the $12,000 off the bottom line. Would you have to come back to us or is this money has already been deposited? Or how, what's the process?
Sure, so to answer your question, we would come back. I mean, I think we are all of the understanding that the board is more inclined to approve this project to proceed in light of this grant. Um, but that said, in terms of the firmness of the availability, um, we do have some schedule risks, but, um, these sort of larger issues at play here. The OWDA board did, uh, meet last week and sort of discussed this. They did approve several loans with no issue. One of those was an MSD loan that was approved last year. Um, you know, they did say something to the effect of there are things going on in Washington outside of our control. Um, but they seem to be funded for this year, so we are not aware of any, um, issues with, with this particular grant for this year. What that means in the future for future years, I don't know. Um, we'll see on that, but, uh, so we don't have. So we don't have concerns about those larger issues at this time. As I've shared before, we do have some concerns about meeting the schedule. I mean, we do need to proceed quickly, expeditiously, to get this loan awarded this year in order to receive the grant. So appreciate the board's cooperation in accelerating the public hearing in this legislation to allow us the best chance to do that. But we would certainly regroup with the administration and the board if something does go awry.
Okay. And then let me understand the grant thing. Is it in phases? Is it reimbursable? Or is it, we're going to give you our bank account number and a direct deposit of $4 million, you know, say we do all the paperwork right, do we get the $4 million upfront? Or is this something that would have to span over years?
So because it's principal forgiveness on a loan, it operates a little bit differently. Like I said, we will advertise the contract for the construction of the project. Once we have that number, the loan will be awarded at that time, and we have the opportunity. So for the principal forgiveness, we simply won't need to repay that amount. So that's why it acts essentially like a grant. But with the loan itself, we have the option either to pay and then reimburse ourselves, or draw down funds, I should say, to reimburse ourselves from OEPAs, or we can essentially transfer to them and send invoices to them once we've approved them, and OEPAs will pay the contractor directly during the term of construction.
Okay. I just wanted to know how that works out.
Right. We essentially just won't have to repay it.
Yeah, my philosophy now is, if there's some cash, let's give them our account number, Mr. Ludo, and tell them to make a direct deposit. We need it as quick as Cash App can get to our account, because the way they've changed their minds. I also want to thank, I want to thank the administration and MSD and Prosecutor's Office, because I was trying to think of, let's look at everything. Is there some other way? We've got the $12,000, so say it was $70,000,000, but you're still stuck with $50,000 to $60,000, and that's in $20,000 to $25,000 value. That means it's going to be higher. Is there any way we could possibly do a TIF? These are new ratepayers who are currently not paying MSD because they're not getting service. So this is a new group of people we're going to benefit from paying into the MSD system. And so I threw out TIF as a possibility, or some others, and wanted to get a legal opinion, because the residents, I think they deserved, at least we took a look, and we've got a legal opinion, and they've indicated that it can't be done. And let me just say, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't go to court with you right now, but I'll take what they're saying currently, the way it's set up. And we also need to look at that, too, because when we look at what we're going to do with MSD, my question was, if it was, well, I won't say question, but I'll put this out on the table, if it was owned by a home-rule city, could they have done it? And we need to know these things as we're looking at a new model possibly for MSD. Is it better for a home-rule city to be able to have control? Because maybe a home-rule, they don't have to adhere to some of these. You know, we're governed by just Ohio. We're like a franchise. We're like McDonald's. Big Mac has to be a certain way. I can't put seasoning on the Big Mac. It has to be the same way everywhere. So this is a good example for us to put on to the table as we're looking at the future, not this particular one. Is home rule got more power than a county government who is basically a franchise of the state of Ohio? So unfortunately, I want to thank y'all for looking into it. I want to thank the Prosecutor's Office moving quickly. I want to thank Holly moving fast on it, all the team. I want to thank everyone who, MSD, everybody that looked into this in a quick way, and will share this with the residents. So thank you for looking into it, and I will support the resolution today, and if there's something changing, definitely want to be notified. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to approve of items one and two. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Well, let's move into the consent agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Walk through the consent agenda quickly here. Item three is a budget adjustment, includes $386,000 for a transfer in the Veteran Services Commission, a grant in Mental Health Recovery Services, and a grant in the Sheriff's Office. Item number four is approving various purchase orders in the amount of $58.1 million. The majority of these relate to the levy work that the county is doing, work with the University of Cincinnati Medical Center, Council on Aging, and our CLEAR Levy, which is county law enforcement applied regionally. Item five is a then-and-now purchase order between River City Correctional and Duke Energy at $9,449. Item number six is the award of a one-year agreement with some extensions to Airmark for food service at the Justice Center in the amount of $4 million. Item number seven, the next five items actually are vehicle purchases in the Sheriff's Office. There are three Dodge Durangos at $117,500. There is a Chrysler Pacifica at $32,500. There is a Ford Edge at $28,551. A Ford F-150 at $42,397. And a Chevy Tahoe, $37,084. Item number 12 is the approval of the 2025 Hamilton County Emergency Operations Plan, as the board received an update on this in staff meeting on Tuesday. The next two items, 13 and 14, are grants in the Environmental Services Department, one grant with Tool Bank, Cincinnati Tool Bank, at $14,992. Item 14 is with Erming, the Urban Farming Initiative, at $4,505. The next six items are JFS agreements. 15 is Talbert House for Work Participation Services at $3.5 million. Item 16 is with the Workforce Investment Board. This is the agreement that we do for system-wide functions that support all the workforce investment partners at $677,000. Item 17 is for Family Placement Services with Presley Ridge at $303,381. Item 18 is an agreement with New Path for Family Placement Services at $4.9 million. Item 19 is a renewal with the Village Network for Family Placement Services, $335,000. Item 20 is an agreement with the Prosecutor's Office for Adult Protective Services related to adult guardianship long-term cases, $67,000. There are two juvenile court credit cards for approval, items 21 and 22. The first is for Fleet Products, $22,800. The second is with Fifth Third Bank at $60,000. Items 23 and 24 are two appointments through probate court. There is a surety bond and entry appointing Park Commissioner Marcus L. Thompson in Great Parks, I believe. And item number 24 is appointing Mark Kendall to the Developmental Disability Services Board. Both of those items are to be received for the record. And finally, Commissioners, there is item 25, which is approval of one employee in the Coroner's Office to Denver, Colorado. And with that, Commissioners, that's your consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I just have two comments. One is related to item 12, the EMA Operations Plan. Thank you, Nick Crossley, for doing all the work on this. Nick is in the room. We got a robust presentation from you at our last meeting, so thank you once again for making sure that we're ready in Hamilton County in the case that an emergency were to hit. And then I just want to thank the individuals that are named in 23 and 24 for their service to these different boards. One is the Parks, as you say, and one is to the DD Board, and thanks those folks for being willing to serve. That's all I have. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Thank you. Item six, as it relates to Airmark and their contract for $4 million, certainly will pass this, but somewhat reluctantly, because I know we have to have food services, but I've been talking for years and years, since I've been down here, about Airmark doing some subcontracting. They have a monopoly of food services in this county. And so I know, Jeff, when we met individually, you said you were going to give me a list of who they've been using, other than themselves, to kind of help out with this effort. Really, I think Hillcrest is an opportune time to try some additional subcontractors, because there are cottages in there, I think maybe like six cottages, and we want to hear from our people that are eating this food, and I could see maybe having a different contractor for a couple of the cottages, and then the children can compare what foods they like best and what they're getting to eat versus what someone else is getting to eat. So I think we need to move forward, and I'll be anxious to see that list. I don't think it'll be a very long one, but they are all over the place. They're at the stadium and probably will be at Hillcrest, but we need them to spread the wealth a little bit. Lastly, on the sheriff cars, there are seven cars, actually, that are on here, and so I'd like to know what the standard replacement schedule is for the sheriffs. Hopefully, we won't be hearing this amount of brand-new cars too soon. I know when they break down, of course, you got to fix them, but these are all brand-new cars, very nice cars, and they need those, but I'd like to know what their replacement schedule is. Okay, Jeff?
Yes, Commissioner, I wrote that down, and also just was looking at the list that I just got on the Airmark, and I can get you the full list. This is just a couple of them. They do use Klosterman, Buskin, Queen City Food, and the Restaurant Depot here locally. So there's a couple of others as well. I just didn't have time writing them down, but I'll get you the full list.
Okay. That sounds like bread. All of them is, you know, I don't, maybe...
I think some of it is bread, because they do a lot of those types of things, but there's also, I think the bakery. I know in the past, we got some information from Airmark about using local bakeries for, like, when they do holiday-type desserts and things like that. But I'll check into it more and get you the full list.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, I just wanted to, I was going to mention also that item number six, I would like to see all of the contracts that we have with Airmark, and what's the dollar value? What's the time on them? I know a lot of them have renewals, and not just in the Justice Center, but they are in a variety of things that we own. So I'd like to know how much that is. The other thing is, because I agree with the monopoly, the other thing is, I had mentioned before about leveraging, because Airmark, back in the day, they had training for people that would come out and then be able to work, have some kind of job training. So I don't know if they are connected with our reentry office, and is there some type of training like they do in other places? They're doing them other places in the country, I believe Philadelphia and some other places. So it's not just a food service contract, but that we're training people that can come out, have a certification, and possibly be able to work. So wanted to just see, are we leveraging everything from them? Want to see what other contracts they have? Let's get a good list of all of them, the dollar amounts that they've made in the last, you know, five, six years, which I think is important. But I also agree with being able to break some of these pieces up, and my experience with Airmark is that they will not do anything. They will do business as usual until you say something, and then they show up and say, oh, we've got all these things we can do all of a sudden. So I want us to be able to say something, and hopefully have some of those projects they're doing in other cities and in other counties around the country. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda, move or receive for the record consent agenda items three through 25.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. We've already dealt with the by leave, and so the last item on our agenda is to move into an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22-G2 to discuss the acquisition of property. I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.